I'd like to welcome Christine Reich with Hampton Main Street. We'll talk about some upcoming Main Street activities.
Thank you guys for having me. Basically, this evening, what I wanted to do, on October 22nd and 23rd, Main Street, Iowa will be to Hampton for yearly inauguration. We have set up an agenda, which I gave everybody copies of. And for anybody back there we'd like it, they're back on the table. Just wanted to invite you guys. We spoke with Mayor Sean Deeds, and we have the city council meeting. I know it's not sure guys' working day. You have a workshop the night before, you have your council meeting the day after they leave. We couldn't change the dates to make it work a bit better. So just wanted to invite you from the 6:30 to 7 o'clock time over at Center One. If you guys would like to come over, talk with me, show me if you have any questions, any concerns, anything like that, to speak with the National Street people. Also, there will be meetings on with Ron and Doug from the University of Cleveland. Except for the anniversary and my senior. And always, if you guys have any questions or any concerns or anything like that, you can always find me over at the office at Center One. I just wanted to personally kind of invite you guys rather than just email, just a letter.
Did you want to know from each one of us if we were going to be able to attend?
If you guys could think about it or be able already, then that's fine. Either way.
Okay.
That way, I figured it would give you enough time to look at your schedules and see if it would work. We'd just like to have a good turnout if we can. We could try to contact all of our committees and just maybe committee members. It would be a good turnout. So, that was it. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks Christine. Under new business, we've got some discussion about Walmart Insurance Renewal. Three Rivers Benefits is coming up. And I think we're going to have a teleconference.
Yeah, well, yes, we'll call them on paper. I didn't know, Dave, did you want to move Mr. Alkwas ahead? But you don't have to, it's up to you.
That's fine, Don's in the new time.
Right.
We're okay there?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be fine. We've had a request for some parking units in 100 block of Third Street Northeast. And invite you to come up with Dr. Alkwas. And kind of explain your dilemma a little bit. Some of the activities that you've already tried to help solve the situation.
Larry Alkwas. I think you should have a copy of the letter. Basically explains what the situation is. The street that our office is on used to be parking on both sides of the street. And a couple of years ago, or maybe less than that, that was changed to parking only on one side of the street, which would be the east in front of my office. And it's opened up some problems in regard to my patients being able to park directly in front of the office. And it's coming mostly from the neighbors to the directly across from the office. Parking their vehicles there for most of the day, every day, and not allowing patients to park in that area. A lot of the time, it doesn't present a problem because some people, they don't mind walking, they don't have to walk or whatever. But we do have patients that are not very mobile, got wheelchair patients, people that have walkers. It is a problem for them. And I know a lot of my patients have commented on it, and some jokingly, and some are kind of serious, like, want to do something about it. So, I'm wondering if you have any suggestions as far as how this could be handled? We've thought about possibly a sign that could be put up. One idea might be patient parking only during the hours of between 8:00 and 5:00 on weekdays. That's just a suggestion. We're open to any ideas that you have that would make the situation better.
I think your letter indicated that you've already made an approach to the folks who've been parking there, kind of requesting that they avoid parking there if possible.
It worked out for one day. I don't know if it was short in range, or it was. Or the other way. So, so far, we've just been putting up with it. It, I think we need to, if we come to a solution that would help, I'd like to see that happen. And I mean, I couldn't care less about, if I have to park away, and I do, my staff, that's fine, and of course, we do not park near or close to the office during office hours. It's common sense, I guess, but... Now, today, there was a different car parked there instead of pickup, but it also warned the people that live directly across the street. So none of my patients could park in front of the office today. Got any questions?
Question?
There's an alley behind their house, isn't there?
Yes.
The house is on that side, so there is parking available behind their house.
Yes. And I know when Jane talked to him that day, he said that, "Oh, I could park in back of my house." And Jane said, "Well, that'd be tricky." So, it don't, it happened between that time and two days later.
Dr. Alkwas, is there any room for parking behind your building too?
No.
You wouldn't have much, would you?
No. And by the time, if I drive, I'll park back there, and my assistant usually parks back there. And my neighbor to the, to the south, not camping, to the southeast part of Norfolk, he likes to have one space there also. And so, we always let him have one space next to his driveway. So, in a lot of cases, we could be full up, and possibly could be right for one car.
It's limited events, no matter what you do.
Yeah. And the patient would have to, of course, come around the block and take it from the other, from the front door.
I think it's great that you've tried to resolve the situation yourself, just one-on-one. It's unfortunate it hasn't happened. You addressed, if we made it a handicapped parking spot, would that help the issue enough? Handicapped only? I'm just throwing an idea out.
It's a thought, it's a thought. I think if I get better at reaching to deal with that.
You mentioned that patient parking only from 8:00 to 5:00.
And that's just a suggestion. What it seems, as I think about it, that pretty much spells out exactly what we're looking And I, you know, and again, if it would happen only occasionally, it really would be a big deal. But when it happens continually, every day, it gets big concern. Now, as far as the days that we work, it's usually the same every week, but it does change depending on if we go to continuing education or something. We'll swap out days. We usually work on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. So, but there are times when we will work on Wednesday or Friday, or both. So, if we say we prefer that on weekdays, that pretty much takes care of, takes care of that situation.
Are you requesting just one parking spot, or more than one?
I think the way, the way the situation is there, I'd like to see three cars be able to park, three patient cars. One directly in front of the steps, and one to the south, spaced in the south, and one to the north. Because I feel that's, that's the, that's the area that we should have available to our patients. Neighbor to the northeast, occasionally, they will have cars there during the day. They don't, they don't hinder us as far as space at all in front of the office. They're very good about it. And a lot of times, they don't have any cars there during the day. But they're very considerate regarding room for my patients, but not here at all.
Probably room for about four spots longer, you would see that.
But I guess, I like to have the people that are not very, that have mobility problems, I like to have them in our pretty close the office, either directly in front of the steps, perhaps the space will come in.
And this, right now, there's a little bit of a cemented turnout off of the street. Isn't it right in front of the steps?
Right.
Maybe a foot or two foot wide?
My building used to be the semischool in that area connected to the Trinity with the church that used to be there. So, and that was set up in 57. What they did was they made kind of a cutout arc that was off the street so that a person could come up and get at least a little bit, a little bit of room on the street. So that area, of course, is incorporated within that space.
Would the size of that be corresponding to the three length vehicle, there's like three vehicle lengths?
No. It would be probably half, that would be able to make it enough to be. I'm just looking for ideas. What's, and maybe you don't want to do anything, which is, if you feel that's proper enough to, that's fine to, I think it could be good.
Do we have any other similar spots in town, or we address this issue past?
I don't know. It's kind of a unique situation.
Yes.
Having a commercial business right in the residential area.
It's very unique.
So it's not, it's not a common problem. So, I don't know. If everybody hasn't driven by it, maybe everybody's taken out.
If everybody knows where the office is.
It's a very narrow street.
It is.
It's one of the reasons we changed the parking, and you know, I kind of wondered about that at the time, what might happen, but...
What, previously, one way it was set up was, people would park on both sides of the street. But they tend to stagger so that you could still drive through. And most of the time, you know, you can still get a straight truck through there if you had to. But that's because they staggered properly.
I think some of our fears or concerns at that time, you know, if people parked any distance at all from the curb whatsoever, that made it a lot narrower.
Yes.
And we also talked about fire trucks being included down to that street, and ambulances, and that was kind of one of the concerns.
Yes. That I understand. And I have no problem with it being parked on one side.
Sure.
At all. That's probably the best.
Any other thoughts for Dr. Alkwas?
Can you do something like, if you have one handicap, and I don't know how it's worse, but could you have two or three spots after that marked out that say reserved for patient parking only, Monday through Friday? Is that something that you can do?
I think that we have the flexibility to do something like that, if that's what the council wants.
I think handicap, one handicap spot wouldn't be a bad idea. The consumer, it might not be utilized all the time, but I just wonder if we could just put some sort of sign there, you know, just preserve the patient parking area.
Well, I think if that's the way we want to try and maybe address the situation, it is a unique situation now. But obviously, you know, we're going to hear from some other people too, Dr. Alkwas. You know, there might be neighbors that we would want to keep theirs open, so we could have them come in and give their point of view too.
That's true.
I mean, I certainly appreciate, at least you've tried to talk to the people and remedied the situation, and that was apparently short-lived for whatever reason. But still, they're not breaking any laws.
That's true.
They can park there.
That's true.
So we're looking for courtesy is what we're looking for.
Yes, yeah. They certainly have the right to park there.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure about enforcing it as far as, if you're expecting the police to enforce this patient parking, they aren't going to know if those are patients parked there. Only you would know that. You know, does the police drive by or do they have any idea if that's a patient or not parked in that spot?
So, do we enforce? Would police department?
Well, if we put up a sign, they would enforce it, wouldn't they? Expecting them to enforce, or you...
Yeah, but just driving by, they're not going to know if it's a...
No.
They don't have any idea, so...
That would be the office's responsibility, and you, and you may not advise cars too.
And if it would happen occasionally, I could look past that. But continually, just like we're doing.
Well, one of the reasons that I was thinking handicap, and maybe one large handicap, but it does address those that are, it doesn't address the elderly necessarily, that would be your patients that have a downfall. But then, the police could see if they're handicapped, and invite them to park there. But we're the responsibility to call if somebody is parking that's not supposed to be there. We're relying you to let us know that. It wouldn't be a regular route that the police would be driving to.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if we do ADA, just so you know, we will have to make sure that there's a ramp accessible within a few feet of that also.
This could be more to it, more than just a sign.
So, yeah, so we would, yeah, we would have that ramp, which we can do if that's what you want to do, and I just want to let you know that if that's the route we're taking, we'll have to do that.
There's also steps there.
Besides, that doesn't stop anybody that's a neighbor on the west side of the street from parking there if they're handicapped and they have the proper permit.
True.
So, that's the thing that I want to be careful that we do, it's a good point of theory, but we need to be more careful, I think, that there's a lot of variables that we could, they could still be justified in parking there.
No, I don't know that if I have enough patients that are actually handicapped, who would be able to utilize that space all the time. And another patient comes, and they like to use that space, but it's a guarantee, but yet, it's not because they're not handicapped.
Well, would it be reasonable for us to put this on the agenda for the next workshop, and invite the neighbors to the area to come and talk to it?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Have to be appropriate, maybe.
Might also give Dr. Alkwas time to visit with some patients that have experienced parking issues. And I'm sure they'd share good thoughts with you, but...
And some of them are real good about it.
Sure.
They just get to, you know, come back to three or four appointments and pick up and solve this part of the problem. I kind of like to park there.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for going to the neighbors first. Well, let's jump back up the, up the agenda to be hooked up with Don's paper.
Okay.
Are you ready to put on speakerphone? We have council workshop here, and let's put you on speaker right now.
Good.
Can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Everybody here?
Yep.
Okay.
Ron, do you want to tell them he's live on TV, on the webcast as well?
Yep, you're live, streamed on the internet, and being video and audio recorded.
I appreciate that.
And newspaper is here, and some representatives of the public, there's four people in the audience, and Doug Tower Pro-Works Director, myself, and Craig Eckhart, councilman, Diane Prawley, council, Val Hogback, council, Jim Davies, council, and Dick Lukensmeyer, council. And our mayor is absent, so Dick Lukensmeyer is the mayor pro tem, and is running the meeting.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for joining us, Tom.
Yes, Tom.
Hey. Good evening, everyone. I'm Don Paper with Three Rivers Benefit Corporation, and we are the administrators of the City of Hampton's self-funded benefit plans. And Ron had asked me to address you tonight so that we can kind of go over where you are in terms of what you've been doing, talk a little bit about healthcare in Norman, how it's going to affect you, and look at perhaps what you might want to do in the immediate future as a result of those things. So, I will try to keep my remarks somewhat brief, but I would commit to you that I'll stay on as long as you have questions, and I can hopefully answer for you. And if I can, I will get the answer back to you after some research. Ron, have you passed out the reports that I sent over?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I just kind of want to go over those briefly. The City of Hampton purchases from Walmart a $2,000 deductible plan. I'm not your agent, you are a direct contract with Walmart Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Iowa. But you, so you buy a $2,000 deductible plan from Walmart, and you offer the employees a $200 deductible. Three Rivers Benefit administers the difference between those two plans. And the reason that you do that is because, it's called the medical expense reimbursement plan. And the reason that you do that is because there's a substantial difference between the premiums for a $200 deductible plan and a $2,000 deductible plan. That difference is used to pay for those who may be hospitalized or who actually might need it. So, basically, it works out numerically in such a way that the city saves money every year because most people aren't hospitalized, and for those who are, the difference in the sums is used to pay for the city's portion of the self-funded claim. The report that I ran this morning for Ron and for you shows that from January 1st of 2013, you've had 21 employees with claims that we processed, 15 spouses, and nine dependents. The claims amount for that, and this is a gross building, so that's, this is not with discounts, but it's a gross building, was $175,679.70. The charges that were covered, now there's dozens of the discounts and the deductibles that the employees would pay. The charges that were allowed were $66,120.77. So the amount paid out from your self-funded plan so far this year was $19,986.19. The amount available, and we talked about available, this is the difference between the cost of the premiums, what you're purchasing versus what you're giving the employees, minus our admin costs, is $103,665.20. So if you were to spend all of that $103,000, you would just break even, as if you would have purchased from Walmart the plan that you're giving to the employees. So as 40 weeks, or 76.9% of the year having passed, you've spent 19.3% of the dollars that were available for self-paid pay claims. Again, if you spent the entire $103,665, you would basically be break even. There's just a note at the bottom that says that there were additional $3,500 worth of claims paid during this period of time, but those were for claims incurred last year, but the billies did get in until this year. So if you are doing the accounting for the city, you'll say, "Well, we spent more than $19,000, and that's the reason." The dollars available for self-funding vary from year to year, depending on the census and depending on the amount of premium that you have to pay. And so, every year, you have done very well, and Ron can probably show you from previous reports. So it really does work, and it's working well for the city. The Deadpool Plan is totally self-funded, which means that you don't pay a network, you don't pay commissions, you don't pay for a company to administer your plan. You pay us to administer, but they pay the claims for you, and so far this year, the claims for Deadpool was $10,342, which if you use the math, comes out to under $37 per employee per month. And that includes two-thirds of the employees with families or more than one person on the plan. So that is an extremely valuable tool for you because it, again, the salaries are that much for singles, and families are at least two, about three times that much. So that's been a good, let me say it, for you as well. The issue at hand is whether or not you want to take a look at renewing early. Now, let me just give you a little bit of healthcare reform, so you kind of understand why Walmart and other carriers are looking at trying to renew early. If you have a plan, such as the City of Hampton does, that renews in December of 2013, that means your plan is anchored in 2013, and the health, some healthcare reform provisions do not go into effect until the next renewal, which would be December 1st of 2014. Now, what am I talking about? Well, there, in 2014, when Affordable Care Act opened into total effect, there are going to be certain essential health benefits that you don't have in your plan today. And what am I talking about? Well, you're going to have to have mental health and substance and youth services, including behavioral health treatment, in an unlimited capacity, whereas today, there's some limits. So, in the future, mental and drug rehab type of services are going to be covered under your healthcare plan, and those can get ultimately expected, particularly mental health. Their, mental health experts will tell you there are 20% of mental health cases that never will be cured. So that means you could have a tremendous amount of expense for rehab services. You could have 30 days with rehab, it can get very, very expensive. That's just one example. You're going to, plans next year are going to have experimental treatments covered. Today, you have to apply, you may or may not get accepted, but experimental treatments and experimental drugs are going to be covered in the plan of the Affordable Care Act. So those are the kind of services that you don't have today, and those will be expected. Today, you have rehabilitated services, and next year, you'll have to have rehabilitation and habilitated services. And think of habilitated services as something you can't do today. So if somebody with some paralysis or whatever, that's never been able to use a limb, whatever, if there's something new that comes down the road that science comes up with, medical comes up with, you may have to pay for that, for them to be able to do something they've never done before. That is a service that has not been provided in passing any, anyone's benefit package. The other thing you're going to have in the Affordable Care Act for next year are pediatric services, including oral revision. Pediatric means up to age 19, they're going to be in the medical plan. Now, even though you have a dental plan, and you won't be using that portion of the plan for pediatric services, at least I don't think you will, it's still going to be in the plan and based on the entire book of business that's going to raise costs. So, that, that will have to be in there as well. Now, there are some things that you're not going to be able to get out of next year, and you need to be aware of that. There are several taxes and fees that are coming into play the first of the year. One is all the transitional reinsurance fee. And that is $5.25 per month, per member. And that's not per employee, that's per member. So family of five, you'd have that $5.25 times five. The transitional research fee is intended, mandated by Congress, but intended to take care of the instability in the federal marketplaces. In other words, with the marketplaces open and trying to get people covered that have not been covered before, there's an anticipation... not been covered before, there's an anticipation that some of those companies are going to lose a lot of money because they're going to get what's known as adverse selection or people who've never had coverage but have high need, so they're probably going to lose money. So this is one way that the government is capturing funds to be able to pay for those who are uninsured. You can't get by without that, no matter which program you have, whether you have one anchored this year or completely new next year. There's going to be a new 2.5% health insurance premium fee on top of the 2% you're already paying, so that's something you're not going to be able to get out of as well. Also, just so you are aware, there's a 2.7% excise tax on medical equipment manufacturers, and that will be a pass-through to the end user as well. There's also another excise tax on pharmaceuticals, and that will be a pass-through as well. So those are the kind of things that you're not going to be able to get out of, but the question before you is should I, should you, as a city, opt to take an early renewal? The renewal is 17.16%. Sounds high, but you had a minus 7%, so you actually got a reduction last year, so the net effect is about 10%. I would tell you that you've had a lot of claims this year that you didn't have last year, almost twice as many in the over $10,000 category. So you've had a substantial amount of claims that is the reason for you being rated up the way you are. I would tell you that the city can renew with the early renewal and anchor the existing plan into 2014. So if you renewed December 1st, it would take you to November 30th of 2014 with the existing plan. The plan that you have today will go away unless you are anchored into it this year, it will go away next year, and you will have an entirely different plan. When you sign the agreement that says we will take Walmart on their offer for a 17% increase with this plan effective the 1st of December, that means that Walmart has to offer you that plan for 12 months. It does not mean you have to keep it. It's a one-way agreement, it hasn't, but you're free to change anytime you want, but they're locking themselves in for a year. So it's a pretty nice agreement, they should all be that way. But my recommendation would be that you opt for that renewal, and then in January, the rates for some reason, because the underwriting criteria changes. If the plan looked better in January, you could certainly switch to whatever new plan they come up with. But at least you have reserved the options for yourself. And it just makes more sense to me that you have as many options as you can, considering the uncertainty that we're faced with, not only in the marketplace, but, you know, we have no idea what they're going to do with the law next year, or even this year for that matter. So, questions?
I have a couple of questions, Don. This is Jim Davies. The MERC report, that $103,000?
Yes.
Now, does that carry over from year to year?
Once, yeah. This is basically a small-month picture, and so if you have any unspent liability, that just remains with the city.
Okay. And the second question I have is if we wanted to consider a plan with a higher deductible than the 2,000, I mean, is that practical at this point, given the changes in the Affordable Care Act?
Yes, it is, and we've done that, and Ron and I have looked at that occasionally in the past, and we've decided that, you know, it was reasonable. But yes, you could actually look at a little higher deductible. You're taking on a little more risk, and, you know, last year, it might not have paid off. It depends, because every year is New Year. It all depends on what the claims are going to look like. But yeah, you could actually, you could actually, you know, offset another $500, for example, and then it turned it back down. Again, not everybody's hospitalized, and so that's why it works. But we don't want to put you in any undue risk either. We wanted to make sure that we have a place to go if you get a horrendous increase. And basically, that 17% is horrendous, but I could certainly look at that for you if that's something you'd like to do.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know your opinion on that.
Yeah, 2,000 is really not that great a risk. The $2,500 might look good, or we might take a look at even 3,000 later down the road. And I could certainly look at that, we'll do that tomorrow when I get the option to see if that offers a reasonable chance to not spend even more money.
Don, you and I talked about that, and we discussed the risk levels, and of course, the claims are unknown, so you don't have a crystal ball to look ahead. But we also talked about the fact that with, we kind of have a shot here of we renew in December, and then we get to look at their cards for the January 1st. If we, you know, if it looks more attractive, then we can renew again at the lower cost. You know, who knows if it will be lower or not. But, and if we go another year, we can raise the deductible next year. And we also have to keep in mind that we have a union contract, and we have to, you know, make sure. But, you know, we're free to change deductibles without union approval, so, but something to consider.
Our goal is, and Ron and I have talked about this, but our goal is to make sure we get the maximum value out of variables that we have to work with. Given that there's a contract with a bargaining unit for certain benefits, we want to make sure that the city's risk is not too high so that you might not save as much or be in a good position if there is a really catastrophic year. You had two bad years in a row, you want to have some room to go, someplace to go to negate those. If you had two 17% increases in a row, that would be a different circumstance than minus 7% last year and a plus 17% next year. So factoring in all those variables, we know that you're going to be successful, we've just add to what degree.
Don, this is Jim again. Do you have an estimate, like you said that 17% increase, how is it looking? I mean, other businesses, 17 seem pretty low, maybe compared to what other companies are experiencing?
Well, I've seen as low as 1/10 of 1%, and I've seen as high as 30. So in fact, I'm sorry, 39. So it all depends on basically what the pool does and what your particular risk level is. Your pool changed only 2.5%, but your risk level's up 12.25. And what that says is that Walmart has deemed all of those 11 high-risk claims, those claims over $10,000, that some of those are going to be continuing on. And so, you know, they're saying, okay, but this looks like, you know, not only did you have a bad year this year compared to last year, it looks like some of these are going to carry on, and that's your risk factors. So the reality is that that's not bad when you factor in last year's minus 7%. I would also tell you that Walmart's estimates are on actual costs for the new essential health benefits to be somewhere between 6% and 9% just for that. So that's why it looks like it'd be a pretty good opportunity to capture this, an early renewal, and then see where you are, because now you've got the best of both worlds. Any other questions on healthcare reform?
I see heads shaking here. I don't think so, Don.
Okay. Very confusing, subject to change at any moment, so I just want to make sure that you're okay with that. My goal is to make sure that the city is covered in terms of the types of things that you have to have, and all of the mandates and everything that you're meeting, and I believe that you are, you know, today, on everything that needs to do.
What's the timeframe that we have to make this decision? Is it by the end of November? Is that correct?
I believe so. Well, if they would like to have it, obviously, this is a December 1st, obviously, they'd like to have it as early as possible. So I would hope that you could have a decision made by the first week or so in October.
Yeah, we have a deadline of November 10th to get the paperwork back to Walmart for the December renewal, so.
By the way, if you just think about small things like the $103,000 difference in the premium levels, 2.5% of that would be taxed, I mean, it'd be taxed at 2.5%, so there's money that you can't have to spend because there's a tax on birthright. So that, you know, those are just little things that have.
Well, Don, thank you for calling or letting us call you and get these questions answered and clarified, please.
Okay, thank you for having me, and we'll talk to you later.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Ron, how would you like to handle this as far as for the discussion and voting? I guess, what would you like to see it on the agenda?
Well, I think we probably would want to get it on the council agenda for approval for the October 24th meeting. I don't know, I guess I'd like some input on the renewal, and if you're leaning towards renewing for the December renewal. I guess, I think that, that being that we, I've already made a request to Walmart that we want to see that January renewal figure as soon as possible. And I don't know when they're going to make that available to us, but in the meantime, I think that we should renew and make sure we have coverage, which we're obligated to have through the union contract. And then we'll take a look at the January renewal when we get the numbers and make a decision then. If it's higher than what it's good, we lock into this lower one for 12 more months, and then after the 12 months, if we get an increase or the cost or more, we look at raising the deductible sum and to help lower the premium.
That's good. It's been a good move for us to this point.
Yeah, well, we'll put it on the October 24th agenda.
Next item on the agenda is to discuss the draft ordinance to deal with the off-street parking regulation, some amendments that we may need to do.
Yeah, this is what I would call a rough draft. In talking with the chief in the past, there's been some concerns, some complaints about campers in backyards, trailers in backyards, RVs in front yards on grass. And we, our ordinance does not define hardened surface very well. And so, I talked with the chief and Doug, we decided that it's probably time, if the chief is going to enforce something related to hardened surface, he's going to have to have a definition or something more clarified. So that's kind of the history behind this. And so, basically, I wanted to get it in your hands, look it over. This won't go on Thursday's agenda for a first reading, but just kind of, and I also want the chief to give some input, and he's at the lean conference this week, so he's unable to give you any input tonight. But be looking it over and maybe compare it with what we currently have, and we'll talk about it at the next workshop for sure. If you have any questions or comments right now, I'd be happy to discuss them. Basically, you know, one of the big ones is in bold where we say driveway surfaced with asphalt, concrete, or crushed rock, which is a big change. It just clarifies what the surface is expected to be if you're planning to park on it. And then that new subsection H, which addresses other units and where they can be parked and allowing someone to park off of an alley, driveways that lead to their garage. Just look it over. It's a little bit wordy, and like I said, a rough draft, we may have to tweak it a little bit, but.
Section 2, that paragraph is not all new, is there just some tweaks in what we already have?
Yeah, it's just changed, yeah, just changed to read that way. I think the big change on that one. That one had wording in it that it was up to any commercial or industrial shell with, I think, up to four parking spaces, Shelby Surface. And we thought it'd be best to just say if you're going to have parking in Shelby Surface, industrial or commercial. The way it was worded, you could have a parking on grass, commercial or industrial, and for an issue, so we're just cleaning that up a little bit. I think that's right now, but.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions, Ron? Any comments out here, and where you've gotten any thoughts as far as on the off-street parking thing, so you've seen, you're probably one of these at the table over there, getting any comments or thoughts? Well, we'll move on to some unfinished business. A couple of years ago, the idea was brought up of recognizing property owners that are doing improvements to their property as opposed to always having to deal with some of the nuisances that you have to deal with. And we've been, we've brought up, and made a little bit of a discussion. I'll leave that to Ron to discuss some more here.
Yeah, you know, I handed out a sample from the City of Oseola, who does something in Edinmore. We kind of left it open last time. What direction do you want to go? Do you want to do something similar to that, or do you want to do something completely different? Just wanted to get some further direction.
I don't want it hurt to just start with something similar in the first year, and we can tweak it out with that.
If you want to do something like that, I can have a similar brochure put together and maybe contact the city if they have any other guidelines that are related that aren't on that brochure, and put something together as a sample for you to look at.
I think we need a starting point at this point, because I'm not exactly sure what I even want to do, yeah.
And just so, when we start something that we can continue it, you know, be consistent.
There's lots of places this thing could go. I mean, you know, something they could put in their window to recognize the capital of that property. These people are actually saving us money if you think about that respect, because on the basis of, we don't have to have an officer go there and patrol or Doug, just in property evaluations alone. I think that they deserve to be recognized. I'd like to see the city recognizing this, this is a nice concept, and it's a very good starting point, but something for the window or something, you know, it doesn't have to be elaborate, it could be just a little laminated, remember the stars we used to paint in windows years ago?
The blue ones?
Yeah, we could get them for nothing, basically, but then recognizing maybe once a year as a city function.
Maybe partner like with a chamber or something like that. Right, Christina?
Thank you.
Main Street.
Okay, we'll get something started. Okay, we'll get something started.
Thank you for bringing that up, there were a couple of meetings ago, Craig, that's a good idea.
Everybody has ideas, it takes all of us to make it work, so it's no one person's value unless everybody else believes it, so thanks for helping support it.
Any last questions, if anyone? I think everybody's in support. The last thing on our unfinished business agenda is an update of the North Iowa landfill ward activities, and Russ Morgan is our North Iowa landfill representative. I think he gave some information to Doug to complete a report. Doug, can you kind of give us a summary of that report?
Yeah, I think we have something in writing before you all, and basically, this is information I received from Russ, the mayor, a couple of weeks ago. He'd asked me to talk with Russ and get some information, and then, you know, have another meeting with Russ. Yeah, we weren't able to get together yet, but we had a phone conversation about this, and this is the highlights of what Russ explained to me, and what's going on a little bit at the landfill. I think we have some room on a few odds and ends. If you see on that report, some of the bigger concerns are, what the landfill's noticing is, the amount of waste that it's actually collecting isn't coinciding necessarily with the amount of recycling that they believe is available, and trash, and different things, and just looking at ramp-up recycling efforts for all communities, not just Hampton. This is all communities that are serviced in the landfill in the North Iowa area. And Russ and I intend to get together, start talking about what can we do to, you know, maybe boost education a little bit, have some discussions with the county to see what their thoughts are too, see what they're doing. There's kind of a lot that goes on with it. I believe the last section on there, the board has some concerns of liability and different things, whereas a big portion of what we give them as far as funding from our community goes to pay for things such as liability insurance in the event that something would happen where one of the properties bordering the landfill up there would, say, a bladder with leak, or groundwater gets contaminated, or something of that nature. They're seeking legal counsel on their own at the landfill, just to look at the different options. So, it's nothing locally, it's, this has to do with the landfill board itself. But I intend to get with Russ and talk about this a little bit more, to see what we can do locally. He's advised that there are some other communities that are starting to promote recycling again a little bit more, because it seems like it's kind of fallen off a little bit in many areas, in many aspects of recycling. You know, the last thing we want to see is higher rates for our citizens, we don't want to, nobody wants to see that. We don't want to see higher rates for our haulers, our waste haulers, because they're going to pass that on to us, you know, as citizens. And so, those are just different things, and if we can maybe help boost things a little bit by just something as simple as educating the people, promoting a few things to help with that, some low-cost education programs or something of that nature, those are things we'd like to work into. So, I'm going to get with Russ here in the next month, and we can have a discussion, and sit down and maybe bring Russ in too personally, because he's the one that's been attending most meetings, and we can go from there. I think that'd be good, just to basically just keep the communication lines going, and I think that's, he's serving a good purpose there up there.
Yeah, a couple of things, maybe we could combine somehow the property recognition and the recycling and the education efforts, and then NIAAC and community education, I think is always looking for classes, I'm sure that we could try to put something together for here locally through that NIAAC community education on recycling.
I think that'd be good, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Doug. Any other unfinished business?
Just for information sake, I'm just curious if we have heard anything more about the fire department car, and about what Dick and I talked about before, partnering with this special traffic enforcement program over on to check for things.
The fire department car, I talked with the fire chief, it's probably been three weeks ago, and he's, doesn't have it ready to, evidently they got to just get it out and get it started and cleaned up and ready, and he hasn't done that yet, so. I've told him that we're ready on our end, and it's ready to go, so. And the stump, I have to talk to the chief and get an update from him.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Derek.
Any other unfinished business? Anything else from the public that we didn't address tonight that needs to be? Well, we'll adjourn this workshop at 6:56. Thank you all for attending.